Good evening, welcome to tonight's Town Council meeting here in Council Chambers. Today is Monday, April 24, 2017, it is 7:03. Agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance, please join me. Agenda item number two, roll call, please.
Counselor Claire.
Present.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clements.
Present.
Counselor DePietro.
Present.
Counselor Estrada.
Present.
Counselor McKenzie.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and accept Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, April 10, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? We have one abstention, Counselor Estrada. Simple handful, all those in favor? Seven in favor, one abstention, motion carries. Agenda item number four, Subcommittee reports, A General Government, Counselor Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two meetings, and I will try to condense as best as possible. The first meeting, which was on the General Government budget, which covers 18 agenda items. So, I'm not going to read seconds and thirds and all that good stuff, I'm not going to get too deep into that, I'll just go with what the budgets that we reviewed are, how much they were. I'll point out that each of these were unanimously voted on to recommend to council, so, but I'll give you some of the comments because obviously we spent two and a half hours, so people's comments are important. So, we have the General Government meeting on Wednesday, April 12, and the town manager, Mr. Town Manager San Angelo noted that for comparison, we should use the FY '17 budget versus the adjusted '17 column against the recommended FY '18, as the increased change percentages do not reflect the monies that were reallocated, that were reallocated, not actually reduced. Yeah. These were put into a special town manager's account in anticipation of union contract negotiations and subsequently used. The overall budget didn't change. Director Harno added that all the salary items show less than the 2% actual increase, this is due to the number of pay periods in the coming year. So, if you have a chance to look at that budget, you'll understand what we're talking about. Agenda item number one was to review the council, Town Council budget, and there was some discussion about the Town Council prep, packet prep and printing cost. Counselor Carrasco expressed concerns about the increasing printing costs, suggested to purchase tablets for all council, eliminate print materials. Debate ensued, more information on costs and training as needed can be presented at another meeting. So, we voted to recommend that budget of, what is it, $16,390. Agenda item number two was to review the council, Town Manager's budget, excuse me. Counselor Steves questioned the solar consultant item, Town Manager San Angelo expressed the need for one as long as we have solar contracts, it's a specialized field. And we voted that budget of $279,299. Agenda item three is the accountant's budget. We reviewed the items, and then we recommended a budget of $163,033. Agenda item four was the assessor's budget. Counselor Steve asked, why is it that, why is there a budget with, this is the only budget with stipends? Assessor Cunoyer stated they are a full, real working board, and it has always been that way. Counselor Manna and Citizen Ryan noted that they believed it's required by law to pay them. There was no further discussion, and we voted that budget of $197,795. Agenda item five was the treasurer collector's budget. Counselor McKenzie asked, what are the parking clerk's duties? Town Manager San Angelo explained and noted they are hearing officers. Little more discussion, and then we voted that budget of $398,134. Agenda item six was to review the attorney, Town Attorney budget. Counselor Claire asked the Town Manager about general labor legal fees, are we up or down? The Town Manager noted it fluctuates, it depends on whether there are union negotiations or increase in litigations. Last year was union, it's been relatively flat overall, labor lawyers are Merrick O'Connell and general legal is Rob Caprera. We voted that Town Attorney budget of $137,000. Agenda item seven was the clerk, Town Clerk's budget. Counselor Steves questioned the increase in conference, in conferences line. Clerk Bonnades responded that the annual conference is now located further away, which adds cost. We voted the Town Clerk's budget of $173,138. Agenda item number eight was the elections budget. Clerk Bonnades noted the large decreases due to no state elections this fall, the budget fluctuates yearly, and that elections budget was $40,105. Agenda item nine was the cable budget. Town Manager San Angelo explained that the cable is fully funded by the cable rate payers, not taxes. He explained the present need for a full-time manager, increased programming demand, attention to vendors, overall operations. He was recommending Mr. Manager Jim Cosgrove for the additional hours to be full-time. This budget supports this change and the benefits along with it. If the money is ever reduced, then the position will be reduced as well. Citizen Member Nash asked if this change needed to go to council for a vote, as it's a reorganization. Town Manager San Angelo said he would bring it to council, and we voted the cable budget of $159,509. Agenda item 10 was the administration budget. Counselor Steve questioned copier items, purchasing versus leasing. Assessor Cunoyer noted that we purchased through the state vendor bid list at a significant savings, and includes, and that includes maintenance. Director Harno explained phone system costs and anticipated few cost reductions. Citizen Member Nash questioned postage item increases, and Director Harno noted that while actual expenses in that area have gone down, she would prefer it to stay as budgeted. If there's an excess, it will be allocated appropriately to another account, and we approved an administration budget of $452,000. Agenda item 11 is the data processing budget. Counselor Steve expressed concern over the costs of the software. Assessor Cunoyer added the largest expenses with our financial software licensing support, upgrades and maintaining the server, our costs are about 1.4% of total budget, and consultants say that most towns our size are 3% of budget, so we're below. We voted the processing budget of $190,945. The next one, Agenda item 12, Council Reserves budget. Citizen Member Nash noted this is more of an emergency fund, nothing is spent from it, monies are transferred to other accounts by vote of council as needed. The reserve budget we voted on was $100,000. Agenda item 13 is the personnel budget. Discuss budgeting projected retirements, the contributor, contributory retirement line and landfill royalty funding. At that point, we then voted on personnel budget of $3,413,850. We took health budgets as two agenda items. The town is item 14, and we had the school item as 14B. So, Agenda item 14 was group health and life insurance budget, discussed current plans in anticipating towns' overall needs, and we recommended the budget of $273,896. Agenda item 14B was to review the schools' health and life insurance budget. Director Harno noted they anticipated up to 20 retirees from the school system. We discuss budget impact of retirees and new hires. At that point, we voted the budget of $1,833,395. We moved on to Agenda item 15, which is general insurance. There, we discussed the line items, and then voted that budget of $542,500. Agenda item 16 was the boards and committees budget. The only change there, the historical committee was requesting an additional $250 for some extenuating costs on the bicentennial, finishing up, I believe. And at that point, we voted a $6,708 budget for boards and committees. Agenda item 17 was the articles budget. Director Harno noted increases in ambulance billings, which is good, the additional OPEB actuary costs due to increased disclosures on finance statements, audit now requires more of, is now required more often, so they added $5,000 to that account, which made the articles budget that we voted on $107,000. Agenda item 18 was the debt services budget, reviewed debt services schedules. Citizen Member Nash asked why we are not using free cash to pay down the debt, and Collector Ernest Bunier explained, most debt is not callable for 10 years or more. If you pay it off early, it results in higher interest, may result in higher interest. We have very low rates, most of them are under 3%. There is an additional debt capacity if we need it, and at that point, the budget was voted as $2,717,876. We then discussed, so that was the end of our budget items. We then discussed the next meeting on, for schedules, the need for a meeting to change schedules one and five. Director Harno asked, was asked how much the Casella revenues were, how they were looking, and she noted that they were down about a half a million from year-to-date last year. It was requested that she provide an estimated prediction of anticipated revenues until closing based on the reductions in tonnage that are occurring, and she said she would work on that. We adjourned that meeting at 9:08, and those are the minutes. If you want a full minutes, if you want the full minutes, I'm sure they'll be posted online soon, or you can get a copy in the manager's office. Okay. So, tonight, the next minutes, which aren't that long, are on the agenda, so I thought it was important that we made sure that got that done. There was a joint meeting of the General Government and Town Council on Tuesday, April 18. So, last week, we met in the Rice Conference Room. The first, and we had a quorum of councilors who were present, Counselor Estrada, Counselor Steves, Counselor Manna, Counselor McKenzie, Counselor Claire, and myself, and a few other member, a few other citizens, and Citizen Member Nash was there. So, Agenda item one, accept the minutes from the last meeting, which we did, it was a three in favor and one abstention from the committee. Agenda item two.
(inaudible).
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, you're, I'm sorry, yes, okay. I'm, yeah, I usually don't even, I just write who was there, but, yes, I was informed, and thank you for doing that, appreciate it. Agenda item number one, accept joint General Government meeting, oh, sorry, Agenda item number two, discuss adding ballot question to the June 2017 election regarding bans that may include marijuana retail sales. Production, manufacturing and other usages in Southbridge, entertain any motions to recommend action to council. Counselor Steve stated that perhaps we should look at more of a moratorium rather than a ban, regulate the quantity like the 20% based on liquor stores, like 20%, which would be based on the amount of liquor store establishments, as has been proposed by the state, except the 2% local tax that they will generate. He says it's been around for medical uses, medicinal and other uses as far back as recorded. Studies in other areas don't indicate increased use or pollution. Counselor Manna raised the point that marijuana is still illegal federally. It's an all-cash business, which makes it difficult to regulate from a tax point. These places cannot deposit money into a bank like other businesses. We might allow this, and then the feds could come in and close them all down. Counselor McKenzie stated we should put it to the voters, he's against having any operations in our town, not making it any easier to get, we have enough drug problems, and just because it would be revenue doesn't mean it'd be good for the town. Mr. Smick said the people voted this last November, and it passed in our town. It's not much different than regulating package stores. The people spoke, and we should focus on regulations. What's the objective that council is trying to achieve? Zoning can, can be addressed, zoning can address the retail site issue in as little as six weeks, and he noted that council represents the people. Citizen Member Nash believes we're all, this is, we are being premature, the state hasn't put anything into place, and we should wait. He's not in favor of taking action, and recommends if council does decide to go to the ballot, it should be four separate questions for voters to decide what uses they do or do not want in town versus an overall ban. Counselor Claire noted we should treat it as any emerging business. If it's not here, people will go to neighboring towns, like what used to happen with Sunday liquor sales, and we should keep the tax revenues for us. I noted concerns have been expressed by our police chief and the hospital CEO in regard to local retail sales and such. Counselor Estrada added that people did, the people did vote in November. A number of recommendations to council were suggested, and after much debate, much, much debate, the committee decided, committee couldn't decide, so the committee decided it would not give a specific ballot question recommendation, but I offered up the following motion. Recommend that council consider adding one or more ballot questions to the June 13, 2017 elections regarding the prohibition of any or all types of marijuana operation, operation establishments, should say in Southbridge, sorry, I missed that. It was seconded by Counselor Steves, and the Subcommittee voted three in favor, and Citizen Member Nash was opposed. So, you will see tonight on the agenda, that will come up for discussion, debate or proposal by the full council, because we felt it was important that full council, we had five, but there are eight of us, so we brought it up here. Agenda item number three was new business. I brought up the need to continue the work on the manager's evaluation tools, so that this council has an opportunity to finish the elevation, the evaluation before the Town Manager contract renewal period, which is August. The Town Manager's contract renews automatically if we're late. This puts the council, any council, puts any council in the town at risk in the event a manager is underperforming. A General Government meeting to continue the work process is set for Wednesday, May 3. The time is to be announced, I'm just waiting for the planning board's agenda, it'll be 7:00 or 7:30. I also ask that the councilors come prepared by reviewing the documents that have been provided, and, so, that was pretty much it. We adjourned at 8:40, and those are the minutes, so, yes, feel free to add to that, I just finished them.
Well, thank you, Madam Vice Chair and Chair of the General Government. Just for my comments, it says we might allow this, and then the feds could come in and close them all down, after I'm talking about the money, and I think that was general conversation, and I just wanted, just to be clear that we could allow businesses to come into town, but because of the conflict with the federal government, they can't come in and shut anybody down, so, and I think that's what I basically said.
I thought that's probably what people meant, probably understood, but that's okay, I'll, I'll add that note, that businesses come into town, but they could get shut down.
Yeah, I just read it as running, so, with, and with what I was saying about the money that was taken in, so.
So, I noted I'll make the change.
Thank you.
Anybody else whose comments weren't construed?
Oh, and also, I did also support this, going to the voters. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Okay, then I'm done. So, we have two meetings I mentioned earlier, May 3 for the evaluation process, and May 15 for the capital budget and a few other items.
(inaudible).
Thank you. B, Department of Public Works, Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I don't have any minutes to report, I do have a meeting scheduled for May 4, that's a Thursday, at 7:00 PM in the Rice Conference Room, and it's strictly on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. C, Education and Human Services, Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two agendas here, I also had a third one from January that I had forgotten to, in a packet, there's also one from January that I had forgotten to type up, but I summarized it like three months ago, so I'm not going to read that one. But I've got a couple from this past week and a half. In attendance were myself, Counselor McKenzie, Clements, Claire, Citizen Members Shay and Ryan, Health Director Andy Pelletier, Town Manager Juan San Angelo, and Citizens Rick Nash and Maureen Doyle. I called the meeting to order at 6:30, 6:00 PM. There was one agenda item, which was to discuss the Health Department budget of $829,199. And the way I'm going to summarize this is I, I basically wrote it down as just comments and some questions that people had asked. I didn't specifically identify who specifically asked which questions, so I'll just kind of summarize it this way. I read each section line by line, and asked questions as they came up as follows. Why is there an $8,000 line item from Casella for the director's salary? Andy said that it was included in the 2007 contract intended to cover some of his time spent addressing landfill issues, but he spends 30 to 50% doing that weekly, a lot of it is chasing ghosts, he said. The budget includes a landfill monitor and spotter, who are entirely Casella reimbursed, and a health solid waste recycling inspector, 71% reimbursed, and the department's principal clerk also gets an $8,000 line item. Mr. San Angelo said the intent overall was to be taking some part of their work and paying for it. He noted the budget includes 2% raises, plus a step adjustment from Santos. What's the rough landfill closure date now, and how much tonnage has fallen? Andy said it, it's about one year left, but the date shifts a little. Casella was supposed to give them an updated schedule on April 20. Mr. San Angelo said that July 2016 tonnage was $165,000, by October it was $90,000. In January 2017 it was $52,000, and in March it was just $20,000, partly because of snow. Mr. Pelletier said Casella's goal is 75% of the site assignment's maximum tonnage. Why were there changes in the curbside monitor's salary in recent years? Mr. Pelletier said last year, the monitor left after only a half-year, it's generally budgeted at $20,000, plus seven raises. This year's is $22,455. If curbside pickup is budgeted at $350,000, what's the actual bond amount for? Mr. Pelletier noted that that figure has always been low, the bond is, was originally $650,000, but he recently looked at other towns and reset it to a million. For comparison, Auburn's is about $980,000. Bulk pickup adds $200,000, and hazardous waste days are $10,000 to $15,000 per weekend, four times a year. If it's bud, no, if it's budgeted at $350,000, why was FY 26, 2016, just $320,833? Mr. Pelletier said the total was what they actually billed us, he pays it monthly at little, at a little more than $39,000 a month. Last year's budget had $500 for repair and maintenance of equipment, but not this year, why? He said that that was supposed to cover the landfill's Jerome monitors, but he's not sure that they're repairable or even work. He said the line has never been used, so it was eliminated. Why cuts to gear and uniforms, which was 11500 to 1,000? He said that's based on last year's use. Three people buy gear with it, and they recently found a less costly provider. What's the communicable disease line for? He said, they've been investigating occurrences of any of the 45 state listed illnesses, if a town gets one. Doing so usually costs $6,000 to $10,000, but if we come up with one out-of-control TB case, we're lost. He also noted the next moving expenses line was simply moved from elsewhere in the budget, the emergency housing line, which is now zero, to cover moving people out of dangerous buildings, et cetera. It's only been used once so far. The tie-in bond line states partially funded for Casella, why and how much? He said that none of the testing and oversight they do for us, the entire line's listed is $20,750, is so funded. Only any work they do related to the proposed expansion, emergency landfill incidents, and the like. Another light, another item for lab auditing covers tie-in bond's direct estimate for collecting a random sample from one of the quarterly well test sites and sending it to a third-party lab to ensure Casella's results are valid. Mr. Pelletier said they've seen minor differences, but nothing major. What's the $3,000 data line, data processing line for? That's for camera software at the landfill. Capital outlay line uses $33,545 for recycling fund for toters, what else is it used for? Advertising, the Board, but the Board of Health and landfill oversight are also currently looking at the program to see how it can better satisfy site assignment condition number 26, using funds raised from waste ban violations instead. Ms. Ryan moved to recommend the budget as presented. Counselor Claire seconded, and it passed unanimously 5-0. And an earlier version of this agenda, if you might have seen it, included the school district's budget, but they asked to be rescheduled to the last minute. The meeting adjourned at 7:10. And the one, a couple, the next week, on April 18, we also met, where, in that case, the attendance was myself, Counselor McKenzie, Counselor Clements, Counselor Manna, Estrada, Claire, Little League President Chris Hogan, Citizens Rick Nash and Dave Smick, and Recreation Director Steve Roenfeld. I called the meeting to order at 6:15, when Counselor Clements arrived to make quorum. There was again one agenda item, which was to discuss a request from Chris Hogan of the Southbridge Little League to install bedding cages at Henry Street, and entertain a motion to recommend the council for ratification. Mr. Hogan said he's been trying to install bedding cages there for at least a year, and in fact, actually ended up several years. If, in, having initially contacted the council last spring, at that time, there was no league representative present, but we discussed it and had concerns regarding, among other things, whether the cages would be available for other users, since they're proposed for town property, and at that time, we had never heard back from the town, from the league. This time, Mr. Hogan did not have plans or paperwork, although he said he had some quotes for the work. He said it would cost about $15,000 to fence it in, funds the league had last year, but no longer has. So, his intention is to simply set up badging cage nets, which are being donated, without fences unless someone can donate the fencing. He acknowledged it's a risk, the netting would get cut up, and also observed it could put the town in some liability if someone tries climbing them and gets hurt. He also suggested moving some nearby playground equipment and basketball hoops from a fenced area and putting the cages there. Counselor Clements noted donations and volunteers recently helped up, helped fix up Henry Street and Capillo Parks, and asked about the availability of bedding cages at the community center. Mr. Hogan said they're booked well in advance, the ones there are fairly new, having replaced ones that were donated to the league. Mr. Smick suggested asking the schools about cages that had been at the old high school for use in the gym, but nobody knew what had become of them. Toward the end of the discussion, Mr. Roenfeld arrived, so the chair asked for his input. He said any input to our parks is good, and the Little League is a heavy user of that field. He said he'd prefer to have the cages locked up, but open to the public by reservation, using a coded lock or signed-out keys, and was concerned about the longevity of unfenced cages. He noted he's already changing signs around town to include a contact number for such things as parks, for such things at parks and working to better control access. The general consensus of council present was that it should be enclosed, and that Mr. Hogan has to return with more details regarding how he intends to secure it. Where in the field we'll go, comments from DPW and related issues. The committee gave him a list of questions to answer, and he said he'd try to do some at the weekend. The meeting adjourned without a recommendation at 7:47. And we do have a couple, we do have a couple of meetings coming up. We have one tomorrow night at 6:30, which is the rest of our budget items. Actually, that's it, just that one.
D, Planning and Development, Counselor Claire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have no meeting minutes, but we do have a meeting scheduled on May 4 at 6:30 PM to go over the budget.
Thank you. E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Claire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again, through you. No meeting minutes, but we have a meeting on Thursday, April 27, at 6:30 PM. Among the items up for discussion is the presentation of regional dispatch and discussion on that, so it should be a pretty interesting meeting. And then, next week, on Tuesday, May 2, at 6:30 PM here at Town Hall, is the PPP Subcommittee Budget Presentation.
Thank you. Just for the record, I will not be there on the 27th, so if you can please excuse me, I will be in Boston.
Okay.
Moving on to Agenda item number five, Chairman's announcements. I just got two this evening. One of them is just, I was able to be part of the Department of Ed celebration of the Schools event that took place. It was a pretty, pretty impressive event. The student body, they had acts going on while you were there, and also they had the band perform, the band was incredible. It was such a great performance, it's great to see the students doing great work, amongst all the things that are being said, they're doing great work. And one of the things that really impressed me the most about that night was the amount of retired teachers that were in the building. I said it that night when I spoke, I just, again, kudos to them, thank you for still being involved and wanting to be part of our, our school system, and suggesting and making comments and trying to work with the, the school district to, you know, get our school district back to where it needs to. So, I was very impressed, and thank you for them, for being involved. And then, the, the final comment that I have this evening, and it's just a comment that I want to make to the Town Manager, and hopefully, he can, you know, address it with the powers to be. But it, it deals with Henry Street Field. It's something that I've definitely invested in, and I love that park, and there's several issues in regards to, you know, the, the Little League is starting this weekend, the Southbridge Little League Parade is Saturday, and it starts at the Old Wells, and it marches all the way down, right down most of Main Street, most of Central Street, right into the Henry Street Park. But there's the fencing by the softball field, they start the following weekend, they've had some concerns in regards to their start league, starting the league if they're going to be pushed back or not. And then, I am coaching a Little League team down there, and I get to spend some time down there. And we all know summer's coming out, and there's a lot of misconceptions about this whole marijuana law. We have a lot of young men, and it's not teenagers, it's young adults. And, and this is where the stories get tainted, because a lot of things get blamed on our kids, and the kids are not the troublemakers here. It's the older adults, it's the young adults that are, that don't have no kids, that are down there, using those picnic tables, using the field, riding their Dirk bikes, you know, and they're constantly smoking, they're constantly doing things in the open. And yes, I was down there on Saturday, you know, we did have two cruisers pass by, but what good is it to pass by? You're not going to see anything. You, you can see something, I would like to see more foot patrol down there, I would like to see, you know, I know our police force is tasked, and they have a lot to do, I understand that. But I, I think the only way we're going to control that in all of our parks, because I think it's going to be an issue that we're going to have across the board, not just at Henry Street, I mean, you're going to see it at Moore Street, we see it at the Lower West Street Field, at the soccer field, that's a field that was invested a couple years ago with ADA equipment, and made, you know, access, accessible for people with disabilities. And we see it down there. And we have an awesome trail down there by, at the bottom of West Street. It's just, you know, yes, it's legal, but you can't smoke in public places. Not only cigarettes, you can't smoke weed, you know, so, whether the weed or the cigarettes, you can't do it on public ground. And we constantly have it, it's an issue, and unfortunately, it's tough to coach kids down there, it really is. To keep them occupied, distracted, so, I, I know it's an issue, but I just wanted to bring it up, this is my only time that I get to speak in regards to those matters. So, I just ask that, you know, you talk to those that need to, and just, we can address it, because there's just, that's one of my concerns that, for that agenda item. Counselor DePietro.
Mr. Chair, to, to further
Mr. Chair, to further the need for foot patrol there. During the project replacing the fence and so forth, I went to visit some of the volunteers. And some of the guys working there had told me as early as, I believe it was last Friday or Saturday, one of the gentlemen working there picked up a purse that had drugs, heroin, needle, so forth. And I gave it to, and they should have ran right to the PD, but gave it to one of the folks from the Highway Department, which I hope had made its way to the Police Department. And just a sad, sad situation there. That, and the rubbish, and the trash, and the town. Parks and Recreation has zero budget, as it is. They're close to a zero budget. And just a shame to see the kids and the folks who use that place, cups and trash, and no appreciation whatsoever. And so, yeah, foot patrol, certainly. But, you know, all the organizations, the churches, and Year One, they should maybe get your kids to hammer the other folks that are there. It's a shame. It's an absolute shame. This community, we're doing all we can to try and keep these parks open for these kids. And the parents as well, shame on them. It's, I don't know. I don't know how to describe it. I was just disgusted myself.
And I would agree with you, Mr. Councilor DePietro. It is tough, you know. And one of the things that we teach my eight- and nine-year-olds is you bring a water, you know, you bring Gatorade, you bring a snack, granola bar, or whatever you bring, that wrapper is going in the trash can, and it's right by the dugout. So, you know, there's no excuse. You know, we clean up. After every practice, we clean up. There's, unfortunately, you know, there's dogs running around, you know, using the fields. So there's a lot of issues. But it's unfortunate, and I think the community needs to be educated. And I agree. There is money being invested in it that people need to appreciate it. I totally agree with you.
Councilor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I believe, we don't have any bylaws for the recreational marijuana. And I don't even, is that actually in effect yet? It's not. So I think we should be a little bit proactive on this and start coming up with some marijuana bylaws, a discussion.
I would agree. Councilor Clements.
We have. We are. For many hours. One of the things is we have a medical marijuana bylaw. And, right. And the conversation has been, it's as simple as taking off the word "medical" and just saying "marijuana." And at least then, it's enforceable, with fines, you know, and such. The marijuana law is no public use, plain and simple. It's just no, and I don't mean public because you can't go on the town property. No public, it's like drinking. You're not supposed to drink a can of beer, or a glass of wine, or whatever, you know, out there on the streets or on your doorstep. People are not supposed to be in your, you're not supposed to be in their view, or they're not supposed to be in your view when you are taking on, whether it's alcohol or marijuana or any other drugs, you know, illegal ones. So we've addressed that. That's a simple change. We were kind of waiting just a little bit to see where things were going to go. We hadn't actually made the recommendation to... That's the simplest thing, and it can be done at any meeting. Then it comes up, has to be read three times, and suddenly, that bylaw's changed. So it won't still encompass everything that we might need to do. We might need to change that bylaw again sometime when the state finally decides what the regulations are going to be on other things. But that would be a very simple first step for us enforcing all marijuana, not just medical marijuana. But it's illegal to partake on, I was at Westville. You know, you're walking the trails there, and a couple of guys walking by. They're getting their exercise and smoking away. So, you know, it's out there. It's everywhere. And they don't realize that it's not supposed to do in public, apparently. So, just letting you know. So we'll get that back and get it up to here as a recommendation, I think, just to change that. All right.
Councilor McKenzie.
One of the things that we also need to consider is we're talking about the legal aspect of recreational marijuana. But there is the ethical concept of marijuana as well. And besides the fact that it is federally prohibitive, it is also, in my mind, in my view, it is morally prohibitive. And I think that we need to look at that as a community and not just have an open-door policy. Come on in, set up your stores, do whatever you want. We don't care. We do care. And these are our kids, and we need to be concerned about them. Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have for my announcements this evening. So I will move on to Agenda Item Number 6, Town Manager's Announcements, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Tannen. Standing General.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I appreciate all the comments of the different councillors on the issue of substance abuse and the problems in our parks. And I'll get into that as part of what I'm going to say. First, I want to start off by thanking the Department of Public Health. And literally, it must have been 100 volunteers. This Saturday morning, we were all out there at 8 o'clock in the morning until 12 o'clock, picking up trash throughout Southbridge, including our parks. And I know that Wally was there picking up some trash. But we had volunteers from throughout town that were in each of our parks, were on our roads. And I got to tell you, the town looks much nicer. I don't know how many bags were picked up, but I know it was a lot of bags that were picked up. So it was great to see both older people and younger people involved in trying to make this a prettier community. And that was great to see. You know, I was thinking to myself as I was picking up trash, if people would quit three vices, then the town would be much cleaner. One is that they would stop drinking alcohol, because we must have found hundreds of nip bottles all throughout town from alcoholics that just throw them off into the bushes. Two is the cigarette butts are everywhere. Along the curbsides were just ridiculous. And I was actually picking up with a thing we had. And Kim, who was doing it with me, said to me, "I just can't pick them all up. It's just crazy how many were there." And then gambling. Half the papers out there, lottery tickets that people are throwing out the window. So with those three items alone was the bulk of all the trash that we saw, and it was just ridiculous. So it's people that seem to have these vices. There also seem to be people less concerned about how our communities look. So kudos to all the people, and particularly the Department of Public Health, for putting that event together. Second, I want to announce, we did hire a new person in our DPW. As you know, we lost a person at DPW. And very proud to announce that we hired a woman who is frankly awesome. I think she's going to be a great addition to the department. It's the first woman in quite some time we've had in the department. She has a Class A CDL license. She's used to driving cross-country in big tractor-trailer rigs. She also has a big interest. She's done a lot of landscaping with the school system and knows a lot about pesticides and stuff. And we only have one person, Ron Trudeau, who does application of pesticides, because you have to have a certain licensure. She is willing to go to school and get that licensure, so we're expecting her to come on that way as well. She's done some plowing, a lot of different landscaping. I think it's going to be great. Her name is J.J. Tanguay, and she interviewed extremely well. And I think she's going to be a real asset to our department. Also, I want to talk about, we had a recent meeting of the Town Manager Substance Abuse Council, and it goes into the discussion. As you all know, I ask for money as part of the free cash distribution to try to find a little bit of money to educate children and adults to stay off of illegal subs. And I appreciate Councilman Steves was at the meeting. But I was really happy that the Director of Department of Public Health and Human Services, the Addiction Services Department, came down and met with us. And one of his top people came down and talked about providing us technical assistance in making sure that if we do allocate money, they will help us develop a plan and review our plan to make sure that we get the most out of every dollar spent. So a person has been assigned to our Police Department to work with them to develop a plan and how to do everything we can to allocate resources to programs at work, and also see how the state can assist us in a variety of different things as well. So that's moving forward. And I'm very pleased with the state's assistance in that program. I also, as I wanted to note, and I know councillors saw it because I sent it to them, I did send out a letter to the Commissioner of Department of Education regarding the charter school, just addressing the concerns. I tried to be very polite. At the same time, let them know the concerns that we had as it relates to particularly the fiscal year '19 budget and the funding for that. So I'm waiting on the response. I will say, I'm very happy to stay right. Peter Durant called me immediately and is going to be scheduling a meeting with the Commissioner, not me, to go through some of these issues to discuss the long-term potential problem of that. So Peter reacted quickly to that. I look forward to having that meeting and hopefully coming to some kind of solution to solve that problem into the future. Like the chairman, I had an opportunity to attend the School System Spring Celebration. I know that Councilor Clements was there as well, and I'm not sure if some of the other councillors are... Councilor McKenzie was there as well. It was a great program. And one of the things that I've been talking about with the receiver is that she's working her tail off developing all this new stuff and programs and improving curriculum, but she doesn't have the time to tell people what she's doing. And one of the things we need to do is to market the positive things that she's doing, because we need to build trust back in this community and into our school system. So it doesn't matter how much work you do. If nobody knows you're doing the work, it's hard to instill that confidence. So I thought that was a great effort at presenting the information and helping the community understand all the great achievements that are going on. I want to kid nobody, this is going to take years to rebuild our school system in the way we would like to have it. It's not something, I don't care how good the receiver she's going to do in one year. So we've got to give her time. We've got to support her efforts. And for those parents who are out there watching, if you have an issue with your child at your school system, by all means, contact the teacher. Contact the school principal. And if you can't get any satisfaction, talk to the receiver. And I'm telling you, from what I've seen of this lady, you will get results at that point. She doesn't take a lot of bull, and she gets things done. So overall, I'm very impressed. As to the field issue, this was an issue last year in terms of people going into the park and doing illegal drugs. And last year, I had the Police Department go there more in the evening, in nighttime, because what tends to happen is the younger kids are playing at the playgrounds and stuff. And then, as it starts getting to dusk and darker, a different crowd comes in and hangs out at the parks and playgrounds. So I had the police officers getting out, walking the parks more in the evening hours when the biggest problem occurs, is when it starts getting a little bit dark and that park's open. So they did that. And I will talk to them again about picking up the pace on that as well and getting out of the cars more often. They know the problem. As a matter of fact, in Henry Street, our chief of police happened to grow up in that neighborhood and knows people and was talking to families out there. We also, as you know, do the parks program to have different businesses take care of our parks. And that is slowly but surely improving our parks. You're right. Somebody said we had no budget for the Recreation Department. That's a fact. This year, this town council just approved $43,000 to fix up our parks and do some capital repairs. So thank you for doing that. And as we fix them, we're going to do everything we can to protect them as well along into the future. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 7, swearing in and presentations. There are none this evening. So we will move on to Agenda Item Number 8, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council with something that's not on tonight's agenda? We ask you to just please state your name, address. You'll have five minutes, and keep it respectful. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council with something that's not on tonight's agenda? Say one more time, are there any citizens that would like to address the council with something that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Number 9. Vote to add one or more ballot questions pertaining to the prohibition of any or all types of operations of marijuana establishments as defined in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 94, G. Section 1, within the town of Southbridge, to be voted on by the people at the June 13 election.
Second.
And we will open up to discussion, and we have Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Although I agree with this, it says all, any or all types of operations of marijuana establishments as defined, is 94G, Section 1, that's the marijuana specific? Because I wouldn't want this to exclude the medical marijuana.
It is specific according to...
It's specific to the recreation.
Yes, recreational marijuana. And that comes straight from the Cobleman page, who provided us the language.
Yes, okay.
Sample language.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Or concern.
Councilor Steves.
I just wanted to point out, when we were talking about this at General Government, as Councilor Clements mentioned earlier, we were discussing for, what, pretty close to two hours, something like that. And there was a lot of ideas floating around with that discussion. And I know Mr. Nash had specifically brought up the idea first, and I thought it was a good idea, that if we're going to go for a ballot question at all, I'd rather see a multiple ballot question so that we can take a look at, because there's really four sections here that the voters really need to consider. Do we actually want to do something about cultivation, testing facilities, product manufacturing, and retailing? Because they're not all the same. Some people, during the course of our discussion, we came up with the fact that our group was split. Some of us have no problem with most of these things. Some of us had a problem with all of these things. And a couple had a problem with a couple of those things. So that's why we never came to a decision. And so I think it's one of those situations where I was, you know, before coming here tonight, I was taking a look online, and I came across a report from the Marijuana Policy Group in Denver that was analyzing legal pot use impact on Colorado's economy from 2015. And this would have been like a year, I think it was, but I think it went into effect initially in 2014. So this would have been the first two years. And they found that it generated almost $2.4 billion in overall economic impact, and $996 million in total sales. And that was in 2015 alone. And a little over 18,000 jobs overall, with about 12,600 of them in the industry itself. Now, obviously, our town's industry is not going to be anywhere near that big. I wouldn't want it to be. But for what our state law says, one of the things that we could do, instead of prohibiting outright, is that we could set it up so that we can add an extra 2% tax on it at the local level, and/or we can also designate it so that we can have up to 20% of the number of takeout liquor licenses. We can designate that you can have no more than that We can designate that that's how, that's, that you can have no more than that, if we want to do it that way. Personally, I think that makes some sense. I personally think that the idea of, of this particular industry, from what Colorado saw, it, it could be extremely beneficial to the community. We do need to make sure, however, from what we talked about earlier, about the concerns that people smoking it in public, it is illegal, and you, you know, use it at home, you shouldn't be driving on, just like with alcohol, you shouldn't be driving on it, you shouldn't be walking around the streets on it, you shouldn't be exposing other people to it. If you want to use it, go right ahead. But, and it is already illegal, that's, I'm sure that's not going to change anytime soon, and it probably shouldn't. So we need to make sure that if, that if we're going to do something with this, to put it, to put these businesses in place, we do need to make sure that, that there's a little bit more enforcement, a little more common sense out there, people paying attention, you know, people who do use it have enough sense to say, hey, wait a minute, you know, don't, don't do it while I'm walking down Main Street. And anyway, to go back to the, to the Colorado thing, they found that within, within the first two years, they found that marijuana retail manufacturing and cultivation ended up taking up places two, three, and five in the state in terms of overall economic output per dollar spent in their economy. The second one was only second to the federal government, which is pretty amazing. And their projections were that for, by 2020, let's see, by 20, so 2015, it was the state's sixth largest industry already, and it's fastest growing, and by 2020, they were predicting it would be about, worth about $1.64 billion in today's prices. Slightly, slightly lower by then, because they predicted the prices would actually start falling, probably because of competition. I mean, if, but if we were to hit that market, that would be, for their state, it would exceed all but the coal, oil, and gas, and gambling industries, which is pretty amazing. So I don't, so I think we really need to consider this. Do we, do we really want to just completely close the door, or do we want to really think about what we want to do, and, and see how we can make it work to benefit our community? For the economic benefits that it could have, and the fact that the voters already did vote to legalize it.
Thank you.
For the moment, that's my-
Thank you. I have a growing list going, I'm going to go with Counselor DePietro, then Counselor Clemens, then Counselor McKenzie, then Counselor O'Clair. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am very excited to hopefully see this, get it on the ballot. It's an important question, I'd love to see it go to the voters, assuming that's the case after this vote, and of course, it's going to be defined, as Counselor Steve just pointed out, in many different ways, and through the way the states defined it. But I would suggest to the voters, should it come, that you're going to put air and air in this, that we're going to have people, whether they afford it or not, participating in, in smoking marijuana. I'm not going to give my opinion on it one way or another, but it's going to be available in our neighboring towns, from the sounds of it. And wouldn't it be great, with all the drug problems we have in this town, to be the one town that says, no, no, no? Go next on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Clemens.
Thank you. Well put, Mr. DePietro, Counselor DePietro. So just to clarify, Counselor Steve, you did a great job with, with a lot of the stuff, because we talked about a lot of it at the meeting. So right now, we have these sample ballot questions. They just say, shall this town prohibit the operations of all types of marijuana establishments as defined in general laws, see 94G, Section One, including marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related businesses within the town of Southbridge? The other, that we have a sample of, these came from the Mass. Municipal Association, there was a big section of information with the KP firm plus others. The other is just, shall this town prohibit the operations of marijuana retailers, marijuana retailers, retailers as termed, defined in the general laws? Same idea. So in that, in our meeting, we did juggle the idea, do you want to put it as ban at all? Do you want to give the, which then it's over, one way or the other, it's over, there's nothing, no choice. In some of the minutes, if you listen to them, you'll know some of the people's comments. Do we, so the question kind of came up too, and you asked to me, you posed to me, is it okay then, because this, this particular model ballot question just says, shall, for a one, ban one type of establishment, in this case, retail. Is it applicable to saying, can we just ban cultivation? Can we just ban marijuana testing facilities? So I actually did reach out again, sent another email, just question, as long as we follow the format that was legally put into place here. So shall this town prohibit the operation of marijuana cultivators, as the term is defined in, you know, fill in the blank? And then shall this town prohibit the operation of marijuana testing facilities? So those were the things we discussed at the meeting, having at least four ballot questions that would potentially take out each of these. And then, as was said, some people said, geez, you know, economic gain, you can get business taxes from a business, like, maybe it's a product manufacturer, maybe it's the testing facilities. That's not putting it on the street, per se, as a retail sale, where you can walk up to the store and buy something, and hand it off like a nip to your friend outside, and... So some people were okay with that at the meeting, some people were against everything, as was said, and the question was, and then, and then there was the question of, well, it did go to the voters in November, and this town voted, I believe the numbers were 46 to 54% for. So this town did vote for recreational use, in whatever that big, long ballot question was. I still say, does everybody still want a retail establishment, or they just want the freedom to smoke it in their home and grow it in their home and not worry about it? I think, I think going to the voters, again, I, some people say that's double dipping, a second bite at the apple, as it was put to me, but I wouldn't mind getting a pulse on what the community wants. If we keep some of these business facilities, that's business taxes and such. Obviously, if we keep retail sales, it's 2% of retail sales, but as Counselor Manor points out, you know, it's a, it's a cash business, and is everybody reporting all their cash properly, and are you really getting our 2%? And we also know that Sturbridge, for instance, is putting a medical dispensary, and Charlton is putting in something too, but I just read the article in the paper, because it happened to be on the counter in the town manager's office, and while Sturbridge was all about the medical dispensary, they talk about potentially doing exactly what we're talking about, bringing a ban on retail sales and other things to their community. And I was surprised when I read the article, because I just thought they were opening their doors, but they have reservations too. And I think that's pretty much-
Counsel, she has the floor.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So I, I think that's-
I'll put you back on the list.
I just wanted you to be clear of what we discussed in the meeting, and what would happen here is, you would need motions, obviously, we can entertain any motions, whether it's motions like we did the other night, we just kept fitting it around until we finally got a motion that we sent up here. All, one, none, something, it's totally up to council. And that's that.
Thank you. Counselor McKenzie.
I'm listening to the financial benefits that our town could incur, and the taxes that we might see, and me personally, I cannot see putting a price tag on something that I feel is negative to our town, especially having some kind of a marijuana store where people can go in and just buy it. I'd rather they go out of town and suffer the inconvenience of getting high on their own time, and not affecting, not affecting our town. We could, talking about the quality of life, people are worried about the landfill and the quality of life there. Well, if you're worried about the air, be also worried about our kids, and worried about our town, and worried about our people, you know, be ethically concerned, and not worry about the dollar value of how much we can make out of this. I think that that's a negative. Thank you.
Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have a few things to say. As, all right, where should we start? I'm kind of piggybacking off of what Counselor Steve was talking about. You know, this isn't new territory, this isn't something that hasn't been ever tried in the United States before. You have case studies with Colorado, Washington State, Oregon, and all of these emerging places that are not seeing an uptick in violent crime, are not seeing an increased youth usage, they're not seeing all of these big, bad, scary things that, you know, the, the opposing side of the marijuana legalization is, is telling you are going to happen, and trying to, you know, fear monger you into thinking that these things are going to happen. We have plenty of businesses in town that are cash-only businesses, convenience stores, bars, restaurants even, you know, that's, that's part of, that's just, that's just part of the struggle of trying to figure out how much people for taxes, you know, it's, there's plenty of places already doing that. I mean, my biggest thing is that I have a really big problem with this, because the people voted in November. The people voted 54 to 46% for legalization of recreational marijuana. Marijuana has been decriminalized four years before that. Four years before that, you could smoke in your home if you felt as though you wanted to, and not be arrested, you know? Very small amounts of marijuana is, was completely fine, and you wouldn't face any kind of repercussions for it. I believe that the question that was on the ballot was very specific, and I also think that coming up here and saying that we need to bring it to the people is a clever guise for saying, let's take a smaller pool of people who are going to come out for the municipal elections, because that is the history of every municipal election, versus a presidential election that we're seeing, and hope that maybe, you know, if we do this, and we put it out to the voters again, that this time it'll come back with, with the answer that we want. And to me, that's absolutely wrong. It doesn't matter your ethics, the people have already spoken, and all anybody's doing now by putting this forward, and the way that we're putting it forward, is trying to sway the results in a way that, that, that we want to see, as, as personal residents in the town of Southbridge, and I think it's absolutely wrong. That's all.
Okay. Any other discussion? Counselor Estrada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's real, in November, people spoke. It was a real life, the people spoke, yes. Now, but, as I see, is the vote line, our business, or one big social program in the community? Sort of the business, for, for pay more taxes, or the real program in the community? And you have the people? Tonight, it's a big opportunity.
Thank you. Counselor Manor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I respectfully agree and disagree with Counselor O'Clair. I really think if we bring it to the people, these ballot questions are going to bring out a lot more of the voters, and it would be really good to hear what they actually want to see as a business in our town. I would hate to see it fail up here, because right now, I don't really think it's got the support of having the retail businesses and whatnot. I don't think that the support is here, right up here. I, I don't think it'll pass. So I think it would pass to, I think it, it would be better to go to the voters.
Can I ask, can I just ask what exactly you don't think is going, can you just clarify?
I just, like, from the conversation I'm hearing up here, I, there's some of the counselors that just do not agree on having any type of marijuana business in our community, and I, I just, I would hate to see that not pass. I, hey, I don't think marijuana should be federally a, a, a class one drug. It's not a class one drug, you know? So I agree with you on that totally, and, but, I mean, the voters did come out, and I think if this went to the voters, those same voters are going to come out, and they're going to vote on this, and I think you're going to see a, a positive outcome.
In response to that, now, does the, the agenda item that we're looking at is whether or not a vote is going to go to the people, not whether or not we as a council are going to allow recreational marijuana, because it has already been passed by the voters. In the state of Massachusetts, it, and in our town, it's been-
We're talking about the retail businesses.
Yes, we are regulating business, we are regulating what we allow in our community. Recreational marijuana has been passed, we can't do anything about that.
Yeah, we can't do anything about, this is about the retail businesses coming into town.
I understand that, but we as a, we as a town council can put that out, that we don't have any retail businesses, even though it's allowed by state law?
Yes. And that was the argument, and that's why I believe it would pass better through the community. The voters will come out on this. I, I honestly believe that. Thank you.
Counselor Steves.
Yeah, just to clarify, a second ago, yeah, one of the things, one of the elements of the state law, when the ballot question passed, was that it would allow a local option, so that it would be legal, it, whatever, whatever, even if these, even if this were to, even if this were, if the town were to vote against all of these versions of marijuana businesses, it would not change the fact that small, that, that small quantities for personal use and personal possession and growing would still be legal. As I mentioned earlier, it is illegal doing it in public, that wouldn't change either. And that's probably wise. But I think part of the, one of the elements of it that maybe we want to consider as far as setting up regulations for something like this, is the fact that we are right next to the state line, and, and that we know that people, if, if we want, if we decide to, to support doing some, about, support this industry in our community, it will bring people in, it will bring jobs into the community, it'll bring, and I think we have seen over the years, that, that that's, that's a definite in our community. And I, you mentioned cash businesses earlier, and the, because the Colorado report I was citing earlier also noted that obviously it's a cash business there too, because one of the issues that I think Counselor Clemens at the general government pointed out, or somebody did, is the fact that because it's, because it's a cash business, because of the way the laws are, the fact that it is unfortunately federally illegal, it means that they can't get bank, they can't get bank accounts. So one of the things that the Califor, the Colorado report was looking at, is that they find that they, what they end up doing, the businesses end up spending their money primarily on payroll, security, electricity, ventilation, depending what version of the, of the marijuana business they're in, rent, miscellaneous agricultural needs, state compliance, consulting services, but most of the cash accrues directly to the local cultivation and manufacturing. It stays in the community, because of the fact that they're not involved in, they don't, they, they aren't banking it, so it stays in the community. And it ends up circulating much more than some of the bigger businesses that we often see come in and try to take advantage of communities like ours. Also, one more thing, sorry, is that we've been, had references to Sturbridge a moment ago. Sturbridge actually did vote this down, so, so, let me rephrase that. They, they had a ballot question to prohibit, and they, and they did vote to prohibit last week. And I was thinking that one of the other elements that we were talking about at general government is the idea also of setting aside a moratorium, which we can do. We can, we can set aside a moratorium, it doesn't have to go to the ballot. What, what this would do is simply allow us time to set up the regulations that, that would allow us to properly monitor and tax and regulate and keep tabs on this business to make sure it works properly, to make sure that we can have the resources in place, for example, to do stings if necessary, to make sure they're not selling to minors, just like we do with alcohol businesses, and have it set up so that we can, I mean, I could easily imagine somebody in the police department being tasked with, and trained to do, to do something like that. I mean, if there's several businesses, we've got the alcohol businesses, and if we have one or two of these things in town, it would make sense to have somebody tasked specifically with doing that on a, on a fairly regular but random basis. I don't know if that's what they do exactly, but I know they do them sporadically, and it's probably a good idea to do them sporadically.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Steve. Counselor DePietro.
Mr. Chair, I think at this point, point of order, certainly this is something that's going to be discussed in subcommittee, and-
No, no, no.
This is not the forum, this is a yes or no question.
No, 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 this, if I may, Counselor DePietro, we have to come up with the language. The language has not been brought up.
This evening?
Yes, that's, that's where it says, vote to add one or more ballot questions. So we have to, you have that sample, so we have to come up with that language tonight. That's why this discussion is, is still happening.
Really?
Yes, the discussion-
This evening?
Yes, sir. Counselor Clemens.
Just, just to point that it, we brought, we had it at subcommittee, we debated it for two hours or so, and the recommendation was, it was such a big issue, that we wanted to do it publicly, on camera, for everybody else to, and that it, we wanted all eight counselors to be present, which we are, that's good, to really get their feel for, for what this is. And therefore, we have the right to make a motion to, for instance, I'll make a motion to, you know, add four, four ballot questions, blah, 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 and then, you know, and, or you do it each separately. I'll make a motion for this ballot question, somebody else make a motion for another one, or no motions at all tonight, but we're doing it here for a reason, because it's important to the whole community, and they should see what we're talking about. And they can come to general government, but they don't, so, sometimes they do. A few, thank you. So that's why we're doing it.
If I may, Mr. Chair, this forum this evening, we're supposed to come, this is ballot question.
Yes, sir.
We will, we got it right here. All we got to do is decide if we want it or not.
I think it's asking a little much out of the bunch of us, but-
It's our responsibility.
In a, in a short period of time.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Not a problem. Before I allow the town manager, Mr. Smick, can you please just state your name, address for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. My name's Dave Smick, 145 Ridge Road. I want to make it clear, I am not a marijuana advocate. But I like to think that I'm realistic. Now, all this conversation's great, where was all this conversation before the November election? Council was quiet, and, Mr. Chairman, I am going to be respectful. Even prior to the November election, across this country, people are going to smoke marijuana, whether we like it or not, whether it's legal, whether it's illegal. I was a teenager in the 60s, I'd seen it happen. People, I saw people smoke grass then, and I see those same people smoking grass today. They're a little laid back, a lot laid back, but the point is, it's going to happen. I understand council's good intentions about, even with the statement, I don't want children to smoke marijuana in this town. Not going to happen. They're going to smoke it, whether we like it or not, whether we have retail stores or not, it's going to continue, and there's nothing you people, the state, the federal government can do to stop it. People have mentioned, federal government might step into the issue. How many people here are convinced that our federal government war on drugs, that we're winning? I don't know anybody that thinks we're winning that war. We have to have a realistic approach. My bottom line is, why not take a perceived negative, and be proactive, and turn it into a positive for this community? Last week, I was at a portion of the Education Human Services Subcommittee meeting. Representative from Little League, they'd love to have batting cages, they need a fence to secure it. Now, Henry Street was brought up tonight. Henry Street has been a problem to this community for years, haven't done a thing about it. We can send patrols down, not going to work. And you all know what the attraction is down there? The basketball courts. Why not be proactive? Remove the basketball courts, in that sense, there's- Remove the basketball courts in that fenced-in area, put in the batting cages. Remove the playground from down there. Make that facility purely baseball and softball for the youth of our community. Now, the basketball courts, build one in the parking lot next to the police station. And they want to go play basketball, go down there and play. But if you want to sit there and line up, you might get caught. Now, wouldn't it be nice that if there were marijuana pot shops in Southbridge, and they were taxed to the full levy, and we earmark that money for youth programs only in this town? That's something proactive. Instead of this talk that isn't going to do anything. And the people did speak in November, and that's not going to change. Get to work, council, do something proactive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smick. This is a growing conversation. Counselor McKenzie.
I just want you to know that I was also raised in the sixties, and probably, I might be a year or two older than Mr. Smick, and I respect his presentation. Thank you. However, whether or not people will smoke anyway, or they won't smoke, kids will smoke anyway, or they, they won't smoke, I don't think that we should give the seal of approval on allowing such a thing to take place. I think what we really need to do is take a stand and say, "We don't support it, and if another town wants to do it, let them do it, not us." We're not going to encourage any kind of marijuana usage in our town. It's going to happen, yes, I know that, I'm, I'm realistic. However, I'm not going to encourage it. I'm going to do everything in my power to see that it doesn't take place, or that it is diminished, because we lost way too many kids this past year through drugs, and I believe, and I know that people disagree with me, but I believe that marijuana is the opening door to drug use. Thank you.
Counselor O'Clare.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. Um, I just want to thank, uh, Mr., former Counselor Smick for, um, what, the words that he just said. Um, I, I think that that's a realist approach. I think that's not taking emotion into it, um, or personal, you know, convictions that we might have. Um, you know, stating different things that have been proven again and again, and, you know, trying to appeal to the emotion of the people by saying something like, "People are losing their lives to drugs," when there's never been a marijuana overdose in the history of marijuana, um, you know, that's, that's, that's a different, um, you know, that's a different conversation. But, um, and it, sorry, just, just thank you to, to, um, former Counselor Smick, that's all.
Counselor Steves.
Um, I actually wanted to bounce off what Counselor McKenzie just said for a second. Um, is that, I, you'll be honest with me, I, I respect what you said, and I, I respect your opinion view, but I personally think that, that what you're arguing is essentially telling Southbridge to, to make a purely futile stand. And when, when diminishing the real risk, especially to our young people, means taking it out of the hands of the black market. Because if they're going to get it anyway, if it's going to be legal in our, it already is legal, um, but assuming they don't have the skill to grow it, and a lot of our land isn't good to grow it on, then, then you want to be able to get, if they're going to get it anyway, they should be getting it from people who are regulated, who are monitored, who have to go through training to, to know what they're doing, who we can walk in on and say, "Listen, are you doing it right or not? If you're not, you're done, you're out of business. Maybe even you're going to jail." But as it is now, we know that they're going to people who have no training to do anything, except maybe kill people. And they have, and if, I personally don't believe in the whole, in the whole gateway drug argument, but if, if there's any status of, if there's any truth to it, it's because of the fact that it's a black market substance. It's because of the fact that they're getting it from people who have a vested interest in getting them hooked on something that's much stronger than pot is. And the, the best way to ensure that is not an issue as much as we possibly can, is to take it out of their hands. Uh, to go back to the Colorado study I said earlier, one of the things that they found is that by legalizing it, um, yes, unfortunately, there's a little bit of still, still a little bit of black market sales going on, but they found that approximately ninety-two point five percent of the sales in Colorado right now are legally monitored. They certainly were not in two thousand and ten, or any previous time before, before this was legalized there. When you can watch it, you can keep track of it. If you can't watch it, you can't. It's really that simple. Oh, and also to point, to add while I self-spare, is that I certainly do agree that there's certainly science out there that shows that the younger people are who smoke these, who smoke pot, or do any substances, the greater the risk there is to those, to, to the people who are using it. There's certainly evidence to show that marijuana use, or other drugs, or alcohol, or snuffing, or any, any number of things, will basically destroy your brain cells when you're young. It, some of it will destroy your brain cells when you're older, but because you're growing as an adolescent especially, your, your body is changing so much that has a much more negative impact when you're a teenager and down. And that certainly should be something that we do discourage, for a variety of sane reasons. But that, using that as an argument to keep a, uh, some, uh, something illegal and, uh, basically saying that our town, it would be illegal in our community for that reason when the voters have already said that, that we want it to be legal, both statewide and locally, doesn't make any sense. And it obviously doesn't work, it hasn't worked for decades. I mean, as Counselors, former Counselor Smick pointed out, the drug war has failed, it has always been a failure. It was, it was transitioned in to the, to fighting marijuana and other drugs, basically because it failed, it failed to deal with alcohol. That's how it came to be a drug war. It didn't work then, it still doesn't work, it's time to get rid of it.
Right, the list is growing quicker and quicker. I have two citizens that have been waiting. Address, Mr. Nash, police state unit, address for the record.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Rick Nash, 50, Denison Crossroad. Thank you. Uh, this has been quite an interesting series of conversations we've had since I attended and participated General Government Subcommittee meetings. First, I'd like to state that, like, at least one counselor has said, um, "I don't hold any responsibility morally or ethically against anybody here who disagrees with me." But I also want you to be clear with my position, as it's been stated through General Government meeting minutes, I am not an advocate for marijuana, or for any intoxicating substance, but I would like to point out that if we're going to address marijuana, we have other problems in this community that deserve the same amount of attention. Alcohol, tobacco, let's put some attention there. If you'll indulge me, Mr. Chairman, um, I did approach the town clerk's office a while back, I think it was earlier in the, last week, about how the question had been phrased for the ballot, and I got the results. My question to you is somewhat rhetorical, but did anybody go back and check that and obtain that information? Because I'd like to read a couple of things from that, if you'll indulge. Question four, law proposed by initiative petition, and I'll just state a couple of things, if anyone wants to view it, I'll leave it. Do you approve of a law summarized below on which no vote was taken by the Senate or the House of Representatives on before May 3rd, 2016? Next section is a summary. The proposed law would permit the possession, use, distribution, and cultivation of marijuana in limited amounts by persons aged twenty-one and older, and would remove criminal penalties for such activities. It would provide for the regulation of commerce in marijuana, marijuana accessories, and marijuana products, and for the taxation of proceeds from sales of these items. Uh, I'll skip a couple of things, not that they don't support what I'm saying, but it is rather long. Uh, there's, I think it's the fourth paragraph reads, "The proceed, uh, proceeds of retail sales of marijuana and marijuana products will be subject to the state sales tax, and an additional excise tax of three point seven five percent. A city or town could impose a separate tax of up to two percent." That's been discussed here tonight. The proposed law would take effect on December 15th, 2016. Now, what I challenge the council to verify for me is that what I'm about to read next, and which lists all of your names for signature for warrant, um, please verify that for me. There's no signature on this, it's not an original copy. A yes vote would allow persons twenty-one and older to possess, use, and transfer marijuana and products containing marijuana concentrate, including edible products, and to cultivate marijuana, all in limited amounts, and would provide for the regulation and taxation of commercial sale of marijuana and marijuana products. A no vote would make no change in current laws relative to marijuana. As I said before, and I think others have said tonight, we've already voted on this. I think it's pretty clear within these documents. I applaud the effort, because I know we care about our community, but we have had this vote, and I want you to please consider that tonight. If you are going to proceed, I would encourage you, as I did at the, the committee meeting, please go ahead and make it four separate items. Economic development or, or whatnot. I think that if we're going to vote on this as residents and citizens, we need to see it in four separate forms. Thank you.
Please approach.
Hi, my name is Wendy Normandin. I'm at 251 South Street, and, um, I am a citizen of this town, so I would like to see a, uh, vote of, a question whether, I would like hydroponics buildings here in town, because I wouldn't. I'm not against whatever people want to do in their own home, however, I don't even like the vapor, or the selling of that vapor, or the Vapor Lounge on Hamilton Street. I'd rather see this town have nice stores, not a, uh, hydroponics shop that sells paraphernalia to grow this, or whatever. Whatever they want to do, they can grow it in their homes. I would not like to see this town have that. I would like to see this town have a Dairy Queen come in, so when the kids are done playing Little League, they can go and have some ice cream. If you want some more money, raise my taxes. I don't want to see that hydroponic buildings here in this town. I'd rather see clothing stores, shoe stores, other stores, but I don't want to see it. I agree with Counsel DePietro, keep it out of this town, make them go somewhere else. This town has enough problems. We should be here for the children, a Dairy Queen is what I'd rather have than hydroponics. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor McKenzie.
Yes, uh, two things. First of all, I would assume that if a marijuana retail store would be opening up in Southbridge, I don't think that it would be the Flying Nun that would actually be the person selling the drugs over the counter, selling the marijuana over the counter. I think it would be the same kind of a person that would be selling the drugs on the street, because that's their interest. Okay? The second thing is, I would like to make a motion, if I may. Shall this town prohibit the operation of four types of marijuana establishments? And I'd like to break it down into four points. Um, mar, the, cult, number one, the cult marijuana cultivation. Number two, marijuana testing facilities. Marijuana, number three, marijuana product manufacturers. And number four, manu, mari, I can't even say it, marijuana retailers. And, uh, that is my motion.
So, if I may, we, we just need to have the proper language, because it has to say within, you know, if you want, what I'm, what I'm looking at is either the top one or the bottom one, and-
The top one broken down into four categories.
You, we can't do that. It's either all, or, it could be up to five motions tonight.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is he making the motion to send this to the voters, or to prohibit? Because I didn't hear to send to the voters, I hear, heard prohibit.
Yeah. Okay. I got it. All right. This is, uh, a ban to go on the ballot for the voters, and it would say, "Shall this town prohibit the operation of marijuana retailers?" Uh, as defined, banning, um, marijuana cultivation, shall this town prohibit the operation of marijuana re, uh, retailers?
No, 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 no.
Yeah. I'm, I'm having trouble reading this.
Just all, if you want to, if you want to do, if you're doing, you want to ban it all?
I want to ban it, I want to ban all four of them individually.
So people have a choice.
So people have a choice.
So you want to do it one by one?
One by one.
So you would make four separate motions.
Thank you.
Testing. Facilities. And, what's the, um, testing cultivators and manufacturers of product.
He would, he would just need to make four separate motions. So he would make the first motion, shall, banning of the one type, so it would be, shall this town-
Right.
So, I'm going to say-
Each one has to be separate, so you can't make all four. So make one, we'll have discussion. You can make all four, but we would, one, one at a time would be.
Make one motion.
Okay, shall this town, I'd like to make a motion. I need help here. I'd like to make a motion, shall this town prohibit the operation of marijuana retailers? Uh, shall this town-
Stop.
Oh, as, ah, as the term is defined in general law, C-94G-
Section one.
Section one, within the town of Southbridge.
That's one. That's, that's one.
We got one down. Shall this town prohibit the operation of manual-
Before you go on to this-
You want to vote on each separate?
Yes.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. So you, you're at marijuana retailers.
All right.
That's the first one. So, for the record, I'm going to read Counselor McKenzie's first motion, or attempt to have a first motion. And this is, uh, please, if I understood your, this is for the ballot, for the public to vote. So the motion would read, "Shall this town prohibit the operation of marijuana retailers as that term is defined in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1, within the town of Southbridge?"
That is correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So this would be, the town would vote in regards to the prohibition of operation of marijuana retailers.
Correct.
Any further discussion on this? Counselor O'Clare.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. Um, just a really quick, um, comment about the motion that was just made, and the subsequent three motions that will also probably be made. Um, you know, if you're sitting up here and you're, and you're apprehensive because you think that at some point in the future the town council might, um, you know, ban the retail sales themselves, I don't think that, like, just, I'm, I'm, I don't believe that anybody with very strong convictions against marijuana that are willing to go against the very clear vote that we took in November with a fifty-four percent majority, which means that not every single citizen in the town of Southbridge is going to welcome this with open arms. But if the counselor, or any of the counselors are willing to go against that majority vote, I don't see a difference in going against a new majority vote, just because it's worded a little bit differently. And that's all I have to say.
Counselor Manna? You were next on the list.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, I'm just, it's a question in reading the, the motion. Would you want to put in, add to that, vote to add? On number nine?
No, because it's, it's the prohibition of retailers.
Okay.
This is just, that's what that motion is, that the town would vote, that they wouldn't want retailers, marijuana retailers in town.
I just want to make sure it's phrased correctly, that's all.
And, and we're reading it according to the, what was submitted to the attorney.
Because the question here is vote to add one or more ballot questions, so you would, you would say-
And that's what he's doing, so that, no, so then, there would be four different questions.
Okay, thank you.
With, basically, the same language-
Okay.
But just four diff, we're taking out the operation of whatever it may be.
Right.
So, Counsel DePietro.
Uh, Mr. Chair, my apologies for not seeing the sample ballot questions, were stuck on the bottom of my file here, but after perusing them a few times, I, I think they're very succinct, and, uh, in all due respect to Counsel McKenzie, uh, I think would be really convoluted this if, if we separated these anymore, uh, either the-
He's using this sample as his ballot question.
As a ballot question.
He's using this sample.
He, you're, if I'm understanding, you want to ban them all?
You want to ban them all?
I, I, well, I would, no, no, I, I like, I like the way this is worded, the way I'm looking at it, but to further, unless I'm misunderstanding, to further-
What he's doing is, he's taking the second version of this ballot question, and he's simply taking, taking each of these subsections and submitting it into here, "Operation of blank," as the term is defined. So first question would be retailers, second- So first question would be retailers, second would be, for example, cultivators, third might be facilities, fourth might be product manufacturers. There are four separate questions.
On four different ballot questions?
Yes, as opposed to one central question.
If that question has been passed, then we won't get any of us.
Exactly.
Say, get it?
For our vote this evening or for... We would put it before the people, and then the people would choose. Four or five different questions?
Yes.
Four, four questions.
Because if it was one question...
Splitting them all, we're not going to have that much, we're getting four of those.
Instead of like saying no on all, maybe somebody doesn't want cultivators in town.
Counselors, I thank you both, and all right, that is how I understood it. And I, again, disagree. Either the town's going to get pregnant or it's not going to get pregnant, there's no one between.
Pregnant.
All right. Thank you.
Those are separate.
Okay. Counsel Clements.
Well, with all due respect, Counsel DePietro, I disagree. By giving them four choices, if you're going to give them a choice, give it all to them because economically, perhaps a business, a brick and mortar business of testing facilities, now don't we need some testing facilities for all this legalized marijuana that will be sold somewhere? If we have the opportunity to have a testing facility that is a, just a business of testing facility, I personally don't have a problem with that. I also probably don't have a problem with the manufacture of products that will be sold in some other town, not necessarily our town that makes it as easy accessible, but it's a, these are, as Counsel O'Clair has said, you know, merging businesses. There's testing facilities, manufacturing product facilities, all these places. Cultivators, I don't want fields either, I don't know how that works, I have to look into that before vote for myself, but the ability to allow the community to say, we want certain things in our community, we don't, you know, besides recreational use, I think separating them out makes sense because then it gives more discretion to the voter to decide for themselves. Personally, some property taxes from a business that's running here, hiring people to maybe run manufacturing plant on product and such, that makes sense. To me, my big problem is no different than liquor stores with the nips and the kids waiting out there for their, you know, marijuana gummies or their nip bottles or, you know, for underage, and it's not going to change, people are going to do it, I get that, but I like what was said about, maybe not in our town, I like your point, will I make it any easier? I don't have a problem with that. And I do worry, Counsel Manna is right, that the people are going to come out and speak anyway and say, yeah, let's just take it all. But there is an opt-out option, and that's exactly what we're giving the people who said, we want to have recreational marijuana and all, yeah, we want to buy it somewhere, but maybe in our community, we don't want another porn shop or something, we want, you know, like, if you liken it to something like that, we don't want the retailer, but we'll go take, we'll go buy it somewhere and smoke it in our house, but we don't want it accessible on Main Street when you walk up and down, and that's all, that's, you know, that's kind of the gist of that. So I don't think it's a little pregnant or a lot, I think it's just, it's choice, it's choice, and everybody deserves choice.
Counsel DePietro.
If I could respond to that, Mr. Chair, Madam Counsel, I'm with you 100%. I am a patriot, I believe in all the amendments discussed in the Constitution, and I think you should be able to do whatever the heck you want to do in this country as long as you don't hurt anybody else. But sitting in this chair, I would like to be on a council that says, listen, we've had so many deaths in this town, let's send a G D message and be the town that says, no, we're not going to do it. I would like to be part of that message. I want it to go to the voters. Again, I'm giving my opinion where we're another, whether, it's going to be partaken regardless, what's discussed tonight, all over the country and all over this town.
Well, his question hasn't been seconded, or has it?
It has.
It has.
I would like to be a part of the town that says, no, we've had it, there's too many deaths in this town, there's too many, just send the message.
Then you should have made a motion.
Taxes, regarding the money, disregarding the money. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel DePietro. I have Counsel O'Clair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. For the record, zero deaths in town because of marijuana. Anyway, just a couple of, a couple of points right before we vote. Charlton, I believe, is in the process of approving facilities that would be selling marijuana, you know, about 10 minutes out of town. This whole thought that all of a sudden Main Street is going to be filled with marijuana shops and there's going to be this huge influx of people coming in and no controls here and there, we have the model to regulate this, we have the model, you know, the way that we regulate liquor licenses with, you know, any new establishment coming out needing to, you know, send out notifications to abutters, having special permit public hearings so that the public can put input in, so if there is one in a spot where the public doesn't want it, the planning board has the opportunity to then say, no, not in this spot, find a different place, do this, that, or the next thing. Last time I checked, you know, the drug dealers in town aren't doing that, you know, they aren't going to the planning board and saying, can I illegally sell this substance on the corner? Do you, like, there's a difference there, and I think that the responsible thing to do for our community and the children in our community is to have control over the situation and to have control over everything that's going to be going on with this, and on top of that, taxing it and reaping the economic reward. And I, that's, that's where I stand, and I'm just going to say it again for, I think, the 10th time, that we've already voted on this, we've already heard the voice of the community, and we've already heard the people. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say something. I know I haven't spoken on it, but I think part of the ballot question was to give the local option to the cities and state to be able to regulate, control, and this is exactly what we're doing. I don't see it irresponsible bringing it before the people, I think not bringing it before the people and just letting anybody come in, and establishing an establishment is being irresponsible. Regardless if it passes or not, we still have that obligation and that jurisdiction of going through the planning board regardless, so if the people don't vote, all the people do vote, the planning board, the special permits still have to happen regardless, that's, that has to happen regardless. My concern is, you know, we've heard from the local hospital, we've heard from our police department, who are both...
I'm sorry, can, like, I've been, like, did they come to one of our meetings?
No, but they will if you want them to.
Yeah, I would actually love them, because I've heard you guys both talk about them, and I haven't heard that side.
Yeah, and I know they've talked at the Substance Abuse Committee Council, and they've made some public statements outside of that, and I understand that there was no deaths for marijuana in town, and, but unfortunately, there are irresponsible people in this world that use substance abuse, and there was a gentleman that used substance abuse, this substance abuse, this very substance, who God bless his family and give him strength, but we lost a trooper because of this, because they were driving under the influence under marijuana. So it's a very touchy subject, and I know that each and every one of us have our own personal convictions, have our own beliefs about it, but I would caution us to think about the money aspect of it because, you know, when we talk about money in this town, it's brought to our attention constantly that, you know, we sold our soul to Casella because of the money and all the money that's going to bring in. Well, it's the same thing when you are opening it up to a substance abuse, for us, you're opening up, you're, you're opening it up, you know, I don't, I'm not saying it will happen, but it's business. I stand with Counsel DePietro, I think we as a council and as a community, we have our own issues, and I know Citizen Nash said it, Ms. Normandin said it, you know, we don't need more avenue, more access, and a retail shop, that's what it would do, it would be access, because you know what, somebody can go in and buy it for $5 and sell it for 15, it's the name of the game, you know, that's what's going to happen. Yeah, we can control a portion of it, and it will be reported, you know, but it, we have to be, you know, the money aspect of everything is not the end-all, be-all, we've heard it, we've seen it, and we're discussing it now, especially with Casella, you know, some say that, you know, it was the money that allowed them in. Well, is it going to be the money that allows retail marijuana into our community so we can see the destruction further? I mean, that's my personal opinion, I truly believe that it will destroy our youth, it will destroy our community, that's just my personal belief, but I think, you know, this is what we're doing, is controlling that, we're taking that portion of that law that people voted on in November and saying, okay, this is the local option, so what do we want to do? I would, you know, we have a motion on the table to ban, not for us to ban, but the public would vote, if they were to vote yes, then marijuana retailers would be banned. It's on the table, we have a motion and a second. You know, we can discuss this all night long because it's personal beliefs, it's something that's passionate. Some of us, you know, maybe you weren't affected by some of the deaths of this summer from some of these young people, but I was. I lost three very close people, one kid that I coached for four years, and it all started, hated or not, it all started with marijuana, and it started in the school system. So I, I'm biased, okay, because I lost a young man that I coached for four years. So, you know, so it's just one of those things that we can discuss this all night long, and we'll be here till midnight discussing this law, but at the end of the day, the decision is, does this council want to regulate and allow the town to regulate? Not us, we're not making that decision. You know, we're here discussing it, it's the citizens that's going to make the decision at the end of the day, and that's who we represent. We're saying, you guys say what you want, not us. We'll cast one vote. We'll be one out of hopefully 3,000, you know, because we want a large turnout, but we can be here all night, you know. You know, there's a motion on the table to ban or to send to the public, excuse me, to prohibit the operation of marijuana retailers. Is there any further discussion on this particular motion? So just to explain, a yes to the councillor's motion would send it to the ballot as written. A no would say, no, we don't want it to go to the people. Okay? Any further discussion on this particular item? Counselor Manna?
First question is on marijuana retailers.
Retailers, correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this one? Roll call, please.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
No.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no.
Motion carries. Do we have any other councillors that would like to make another motion to? Counselor McKenzie?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that, shall this town prohibit the operation of marijuana cultivation as that term is defined in general law, Chapter 94G, Section 1, within the town of Southbridge?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
No.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no.
Motion carries. Do we... Counselor McKenzie?
I'd like to make a motion, shall this town prohibit the operation of marijuana testing As the term is defined in general law, Chapter 94G, Section 1, within the town of Southbridge.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this one? Roll call, please.
Counselor Steves?
Before I say, I'm just going to make it clear for all of these questions, that I intend to vote against all of these questions, but I have no problem with the voters deciding, so yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
No.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no.
Motion carries. Counselor McKenzie?
Yes, I'd like to make another motion, shall this town prohibit the operation of marijuana product manufacturers as the term is defined in general law, Chapter 94G, Section 1, within the town of Southbridge?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair?
No.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no.
Motion carries. Do we have any further motions that would be like to make on this?
Just a question, not a motion, unless there needs to be one. After marijuana retailers, we just voted on just marijuana retailers, but up here it says for any other type of licensed marijuana-related businesses. Should we make that into a motion as well to put to the voters because that is like its own separate question?
I mean, that would include supply stores or anything to that effect, so, I mean, we could...
Then why would it be in here?
We could, that's what I'm saying, we could make a motion to that effect also.
Okay, well, I would like to make a motion, then, shall this town prohibit the operation of any other type of licensed marijuana-related businesses as that term is defined in Mass. General Law, Section, I mean, Chapter 94G, Section 1, within the town of Southbridge?
Do we have a... At this point, we do not have a...
Could the councillor repeat that again, please?
Yes. Can you repeat that for Counsel DePietro, please?
Okay. Shall this town prohibit the operation of any other type of licensed marijuana-related businesses as that term is defined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 1, within the town of Southbridge? That's its own separate one up in the top, basically. So, I mean, if you're making a motion on the floor, why wouldn't you make a motion on the fifth?
If I may, Counsel Manna, it would be like banning all of it. Because you're saying all types of licensed marijuana-related business, so, you know...
Then that doesn't make any sense to have it up there in that question.
It's just a legal ballot question.
Okay.
So if you want to...
I withdraw my motion.
You withdraw your motion?
Yep.
Okay. Counselor Steves and then Counsel Clements.
My favorite comment is that for a second, even though the motion was drawn, as I read it, the way that, the way that's phrased, the first question on our page, the way it's phrased where it's all, where everything's all together, I think that's just simply intended as a catch-all, just in case something comes down the pike. And I think what you mentioned for a second ago, a second oh about paraphernalia and stuff like that, I think a lot of that stuff, the paraphernalia, it's actually legal already in other businesses. So I don't know if that question would even honestly serve any purpose except to confuse the results of the other four questions. So I think it would create a legal, I think it would create a legal conundrum to even have that on the ballot, the way it's phrased.
I would agree that it would, you know, it would, any lawyer can look at it and say, well, you're saying any licensed marijuana... at it and say, well, you're saying any licensed marijuana business.
That would make no sense.
So, I mean, that would be manufacturers, retailers. I think what that top motion was saying was encompassing everything and kind of adding that legal language, just in case anything slipped through the crack.
Right, exactly.
Counselor Clements?
And I would imagine, I'm not a lit lawyer, but certainly as things progress and everybody figures out what's going on in Massachusetts and beyond, that you have that option down the road. If some other industry that you didn't anticipate is considered a licensed industry, a council, future council could probably take it up at that point and decide what to do with it. I mean.
Right.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't support the all at this point.
I agree with that.
Any?
You should have a vaping bar. You had a marijuana vaping bar in time.
Any other discussion on agenda item number nine? Seeing none. We are moving on to agenda item number 10. Vote to amend the Southbridge Town Council rules and regulations by deleting the last four notes in rule four, which read, unless excused by the chairman of the council or subcommittee due to illness, vacation, unusual work problems, or just, or other just cause, a counselor's absence shall count as unexcused or unauthorized. The town council chairman should have the power to issue warnings, either publicly or privately, to any counselor for chronic unexcused absences for meetings, from meetings, excuse me. The town council may, by a two-thirds vote, censure a counselor if he or she has more than 20% unexcused absences during a three-month period. The revisions will be effective as the first meeting of the council after the March 1986 elections.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Counselor Clements?
So you're all wondering why this is here. This was discussed months ago when we were revamping the Town Council rules and regulations. At the time, we discussed, a lot of counselors expressed themselves of the concern of some of these comments about who gets to excuse who. And the reality of it, folks, if you don't know, is we're all independently elected people, as is anybody else out there in state government, federal government. And we're supposed to police ourselves and we're supposed to be at your meetings. And the only people that are our boss is you, the people out there. So ultimately, if we don't show up and we're, and we don't bother to tell people and nobody knows where we are, but we're just not here, you're not gonna vote for us again, or that should be, you should not be voting for us again. So it kind of, it kind of played a very strange role and we just didn't quite understand why the chairman who runs a meeting is supposed to be telling us whether we're excused or not. Now, having said that, certainly it is proper, it is respectful, to make a phone call or send an email or text message to the chair of something, whether it's a subcommittee meeting, this council meeting, or send it to another counselor to say, you can't make a meeting. And so when Counselor Carrasco said I hadn't put him on the excuse, I kind of laughed because it's not for me to excuse him or not, but I do respect the fact that when people make a phone call. And so we can put the word excused, it makes sense, you called us. But to say legally, you know, in some rule, that one person, one of us elected officials has more over the other to, or that we can then, we will tell people, if we don't see you around, we're gonna tell you, we're gonna tell you privately, or maybe we're gonna tell you publicly, maybe we're gonna out and, you know, some counselor's not attending. That's up to us and that's up to you as the public to stand up that podium and complain at us and tell us. So as we were revamping the, the definitions and such, before the town clerk went to print new copies of the town rules and regs, that was something that really jumped out at a lot of counselors and we had talked about doing it and it just didn't get up here to get done. And as you know, the last line, the revisions took place in 1986. Maybe things were different in 1986, but right now, we're, you know, way above that. So we felt at least the majority of the people sent it up here as a recommendation to just delete that section and just, let's police ourselves and let's hear from the public when we're doing things wrong or hopefully right. And that's my explanation. Okay?
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no.
Can you repeat that, the final?
Seven, seven to one or no? Did Counselor Manah, did you vote no?
No, I voted yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, eight to nothing.
Eight yes, okay, thank you. Because I, that's why I asked, because I didn't know.
Sorry, I missed the question.
Okay. So the motion carries eight zero. Moving on to agenda item number, Counselors Forum. And we will start with Counselor Manah.
I have nothing to say this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor DePietro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a thank you to all councils present. I thought it was a very productive meeting regarding a very hard issue and I thought we went through it quite well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, just one quick thing. I wanted to point out that for those of you who are of a mixed nature, you can go down and help Oakham Land Trust do some serious invasive work down at Thompson Family Property off of Eastford Road. That's gonna be on Saturday, April 29th, or the rain date is Saturday, May 6th. And the preserve is down at 904 Eastford Road or Route 198 here in Southbridge. It starts at 10:00 AM. Bring some gloves, hand tools, water bottle, make sure. You probably want to do long clothing because it's probably poison ivy all over the place down there and, and, you know, multiple floor rows and stuff you can trip over and get spined by. So the whole point is to get down there and help clean out some of the invasive garbage that shouldn't have been there in a long time, which is kind of collected for there for years and they've been working on it for a while, but there's still some more work that needs to be done. So help clean out the property and return the, return our nature, our properties to, well, outside of town property, but this is forest property, to something that looked vaguely like what it might have once looked like as opposed to being invaded by garbage. So, thanks.
Can you repeat the date? You said it so fast.
Saturday, April 29th, or rain date is Saturday, May 6th. It's at 10:00 AM down at the Thompson Family Preserve on Eastford Road.
Thank you. Counselor Estrada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's come in tonight.
Thank you. Counselor O'Clair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. I just hope to see, you know, the majority of voters that already voted yes for the questions that, you know, we're putting on the ballot come out on June 13th and vote yes again. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKenzie?
Thank you, Chairman. I do believe that it's extremely important that the community of Southbridge, and in addition to the community of Southbridge, especially our Hispanic community, to look to become more involved with the community's activities and events. Also, that there will be an election coming up in June 13th, and we would ask that everyone would come out and vote. Don't look at it as though it's a, a small election, because we're gonna have some important issues on it as we just decided tonight. And there's going to be some counselors who are gonna be running for office. And we need your support of this town. If you don't vote, what you're basically doing is giving up your right to guide your town, direct your town. Your vote is important. And I would love to see more Hispanic people involved in our committees and our subcommittees, our council. The opportunity is there, go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clements?
I would like to thank everybody, as, as some others have done, for their great cleanup work on Saturday. I was out of town and flew and drove through in the afternoon and just was amazed at how fresh and clean things looked. So let's keep that up and when you see somebody throw something down, shame them, you know, because it's all it takes. I, I can remember when we did the cleanups on the weekends and you'd drive and everything was great and the next day, there was the Gatorade bottle on the street where you had just cleaned up the day before, or the nip bottles and those scratch tickets. So thank you to everybody who was able to get out there and pitch in for Southbridge. I was gonna make a note that most recent message from MMA was on the budget, that the House was taking up the budget. And there was a line item in there on fully funding the, the impact from charter schools. Yeah, that they're asking for, you know, if the state is going to allow all these charter schools, then you need to fully fund the communities that they affect. So whether or not we'll get that money, but there was, there is money that people are really realizing the problem that is happening to towns like ours, where the kids are being pulled out and we're basically subsidizing a charter school that the state allowed. So charter schools might be a good thing, only if we're not impacted in a financial way. So take a look at that, encourage your, talk to your reps or, you know, your senator and encourage them to support the funding that's out there. So I read that today as a matter of fact. And the only thing, I didn't hear you guys mention, I'm gonna mention it because we have a flyer on it, the Senior Expo and Spaghetti Dinner, there's, which happens every year. It's a wonderful event. It's happening this Thursday, excuse me, Thursday, May 4th, at the Southbridge Community Center on Chestnut Street, from 9:30 to 1:00. It is free for you seniors. There'll be over 30 vendors, lots of great information, there'll be lots of health screenings going on. The Charlton Lions Club is gonna do vision screenings, free drawings start at 10:00. There'll be a dinner at noon time. Free buses are available from the Charlton Senior Center and there's busing in Southbridge. You can call the Elder Bus directly for a ride if you're in Southbridge. And it's, of course, handicap accessible. And the whole event is sponsored by the Tri-Community Salt Council in partnership with the Worcester County Sheriff's Office. So, you know, there's some great programs and, and stuff that they'll be teaching everybody who attends and salt is seniors and law enforcement together. And they've been doing a lot of great things for our seniors over the years. If you have any questions, you can call the senior center, Mike Trombley, at 508-764-5436. And again, great event, encourage your seniors to get out and participate, they do a heck of a job. And that's all I have for this evening, thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number 12, discussion of the next meeting day?
That will be Monday, May 1st, 7:00 PM here in council chambers.
Thank you. Agenda item number 13, vote to enter into executive session according to Mass. General Law's chapter 30A, section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the government litigation, and if so, if the chair so declares, and reconvene in open session to vote.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Thank you for watching. Good night. [applause] It is a little bit after 11:00 PM and we want to come out of executive session and we have some business to continue. So at this time, I'll entertain. Can we have a roll call, please? That we're back in?
Counselor O'Clair?
Present.
Counselor Carrasco?
Present.
Counselor Clements?
Present.
Counselor DePietro?
Present.
Counselor Estrada?
Present.
Counselor McKenzie?
Present.
Counselor Manah?
Present.
Counselor Steves?
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you, we're all here. At this time, we'll entertain the first motion.
I move that the town council vote to authorize the town manager to enter on behalf of the town of Southbridge an administrative consent order with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for enforcement document number 000001100 and RTN 2-19678 in the general form of the document presented to the town council on April 24th, 2017.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Reluctantly, yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
After much thought, yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. I'll entertain another motion.
I move that the town council vote to authorize the town manager to enter on behalf of the town of Southbridge an agreement entitled 21E Claim Settlement and Water System Construction Funding Agreement in the general form of the document presented to the town council on April 24th, 2017.
Second.
So moved.
Yes, Counselor, it's okay. Any discussion?
Actually, yes, because there are people watching us who have no idea what we're doing right now. And I just want to say that this is a wonderful thing that is happening in our community, that we are about to settle an agreement and provide water to the town of Charlton, to the affected.
Areas.
Areas.
Not the whole town, yes.
Right. And, and I think it was a great collaboration amongst the state, the DEP, all of our hard workers here, the town manager, Merrick O'Connell, our lawyers, and, and hopefully this will bring some sort of, some sort of ease, peace of mind to those who have been affected in all this, and it was a great collaboration between the community. So I just wanted to say that, because, anybody else?
Anybody else? Counselor DePietro?
Sorry. It should be noted, especially with our attorney here, that we're doing it out of the kindness of our hearts and for no other reason.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
I just wanted to say then, obviously, this has been going on for a long time now and it's, hopefully, we can, this can be something that will be a genuine solution that, that, you know, the contamination up there doesn't spread farther and that this is something that has needed to be done, that I'm glad that, that we are getting the people up there water. And if, you know, honestly, if anybody up there is by chance watching, please die in. I know you don't want to, guys don't want to pay water bills, nobody wants to pay water bills, but it's better than dying.
I would be, I would be remiss to not think, obviously, our state legislators, from the top all the way down, and also Casella for partnering up and, and helping as well. So, because that's certainly, without, again, that collaboration between all, it would have not happened. So, thank you.
Counselor Manah?
Thank you to the DEP as well for cooperating with the town in the way they did. And thank you, Counselor Clements, for bringing that up.
I was gonna wait for the end, but since everybody's doing it now, I wanna add a few comments. First of all, I want to specifically call out the Commissioner of DEP, Marty Suber, who spent hours and hours and hours on the phone helping us to negotiate this agreement. Marty and the DEP have been terrific. They're putting up $5 million of this agreement in order to make sure that the residents of Charlton have safe drinking water. And frankly, they've been a great partner with Southbridge, Charlton, and with the Casella Organization to put this agreement together. Also, would like to thank Robin Craver of Charlton, who also worked very hard on the town of Charlton to put this agreement together. As Denise said, the Casella Organization, from, from all the way up to the top through their legal firm, were very involved. But most importantly, I want to thank my own team. You know, three of our hearing audience, Heather, our DPW Director, Karen, our Finance Director, and Mindy, our Treasurer Collector, who also spent hours on individual documents working to put it together. And particularly with Mindy, I also want to thank the bond council, who gave us great advice through this process in order to make sure that everything was done according to the letter of the law. So it was a terrific amount of work that went on and even my own staff in, in helping to type up and get documents ready. It was a great team effort and I think it's gonna benefit this town for many years to come. It's gonna reduce the liability and most of all, make sure that, that people have clean drinking water. So all in all, I think this is a fantastic agreement for the town and will benefit, at the end of the day, the taxpayers of this community.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Manah?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. At this time, I'll entertain another motion.
I move that the town council vote to authorize the town manager to enter on behalf of the town of Southbridge a first amendment to the intermunicipal agreement between Southbridge and Charlton for water supply. Said first amendment in the general form of the document presented to town council on April 24th, 2017.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Manah?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item number 17, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
What about six?
Good night. Thank you for watching us again.[1776.71][1776.71][music]